I'll call the meeting of the Newport Beach City Council for May 26 to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Curry, followed by the invocation by Reverend Carl Stokenberg?
Please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you join with me in prayer. Loving God, as we gather tonight, we're reminded that even though we come from unique backgrounds and a variety of experiences, that we are all seen as equals in your sight. Tonight, as our civic leaders gather together to work for our community, we pray for a spirit of wisdom that would surround this place. We thank you for those that serve our community, and especially, as we remembered yesterday, we are mindful of those who have given their lives in the struggle for freedom in years past and in recent days. May all we do as citizens in this community, state, nation, and world be working towards peace and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Okay, first item on our agenda is presentations. Our first presentation this evening is the Disneyland Scholarship Award Presentation. This is to Andrew Morrow. Up to the podium, please. I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. This is a City of Newport Beach proclamation. Whereas any member of the community can affect positive change without any volunteer action, no matter how big or small, and volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through community service organizations such as schools, churches, and not-for-profit organizations. And on a daily basis, volunteers work in their communities utilizing their time and talent to make a real difference in the lives of children, adults, and the elderly. And Andrew Morrow began volunteering because he wanted to help his junior high volleyball coach during his freshman year. He said the players he's coached have continued playing volleyball into high school and developed a passion for the sport. And Andrew Morrow's passion for volunteering continued, and he now volunteers weekly as an assistant instructor with the shortstop program, a juvenile crime diversion program offering first-time offenders a second chance. Andrew directs parents about program policies, maintains student discipline, and instructs them through the required testing. He feels his one-on-one time with the students is the most valuable part of his service. Whereas now, the City of Newport Beach recognizes the value of volunteers and proudly joins the Disneyland Resort, and congratulating this volunteer in receiving the Disneyland Resort Scholarship, celebrating community service. Now therefore, I Edward Selich, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize and Andrew, and honor Andrew Morrow of Corona Del Mar High School for being the recipient of the Disneyland Resort Scholarship and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Newport Beach to be affixed this 26th day of May 2009. Edward Selich, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could you? I'm gonna get the family and all some.
I'll take one first.
Sure. Can't think of any better time. Okay, here we go. Ready? On a three, one, two. Okay. Okay, here's what we did this? Come on. This doesn't happen very often. Okay, on the count of three, one, two.
Use Dad's camera so they have one to take home with them.
How's the water? Are you coming down? Okay.
They're the important ones.
Bush? Where? Set it up.
Halfway of focus.
Am I supposed to see this somewhere here?
Just a little, a little.
Okay, ready? One, two, halfway of focus. Go it out. Okay. Oh, pick that up. It's such a damn.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to say anything?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Disneyland Resorts for the scholarship and an amazing presentation that they gave for me and my family a couple of weeks ago. So, again, thank you very much.
I just wanted to say, I was actually, I had the opportunity to be able to surprise Andrew at his school and let him know that he received the scholarship, which was great fun. And just to let everybody know that for the scholarship, the minimum requirement is that each student maintain a 3.0 GPA and 100 hours of community service to a nonprofit organization within the last calendar year. Needless to say, that weeds out a lot of high school seniors in Orange County, but of the 138 applicants, we pick only 10. So Andrew is, it's a huge honor, and it's a huge honor for us to be able to give this scholarship to him and help him on his way, and hopefully he can keep up the community service. And thank you very much for noticing that.
Thank you.
Andrew, have you decided where you're going to college?
I'm gonna be going to the University of Southern California, so.
Take the money back.
Yeah. We're gonna need all of it.
That's right. Yeah, don't you have something you want to say, like, "I'm going to Disneyland" or something?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is the Invitational Regatta for the Hoag Cup. Jake? This is another proclamation. Whereas Hoag Hospital Foundation, the Balboa Yacht Club, and the Newport Harbor Yacht Club are all committed to supporting the quality of life and excellence of health care here where they live and work, and Hoag Hospital Foundation, Balboa Yacht Club, and Newport Harbor Yacht Club are together hosting an Invitational Regatta, bringing world-class yachts and crews together for a three-day sailing competition off the Newport Beach coast to support the programs and services of Hoag Heart and Vascular Institute, Orange County's highest-volume, highest-rated cardiovascular program among the preeminent cardiovascular centers on the West Coast, and community sponsors and patrons including Accretive LLC, Alpha Staff, Daily Pilot, Deloitte Consulting, Edwards Life Sciences, Hornblower Cruises and Events, the Jeff Birch Family, Joel and Ann Moskowitz, Los Angeles Times, Acquary Capital, Rycard Signs, Sisco, Los Angeles, Traditional Jewelers, Wilmington Homes, West Marine, and Young's Market Company are dedicated to the success of this Invitational Regatta, working to maximize the proceeds which shall benefit all who rely on the services of Hoag Heart and Vascular Institute. And this collaborative undertaking on behalf of Hoag Heart and Vascular Institute excellently represents our city's long and meaningful tradition of support and service to our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Edward Selich, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of June 8th through the 14th, 2009, as Invitational Regatta for the Hoag Cup, and be further resolved that the entire Newport Beach City Council and I do hereby welcome all participating racers, sponsors, and spectators to Newport Beach and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Newport Beach to be affixed this 26th day of May 2009. Edward Selich, Mayor.
I'd like to introduce Glenn Highland, who's the Regatta Chairman for 2009. Glenn?
Well, thank you for the proclamation. We appreciate all the support from the City Council, in particular, Mike Hen has been with us for coming on three years now through two regattas, and this regatta is simply not possible without the strong support of Newport Beach. We have so many permitting things to do for our temporary docks and for all the different things we have to do to bring deep draft boats into Newport Harbor, and the yacht clubs, of which I represent, Balboa Yacht Club, really appreciate the help so that we can donate the money that we raise to the Hoag Hospital Foundation.
And I just, on behalf of Hoag, thank you all very much for your support. We're looking forward to a fun weekend coming up here in about 10 days, and we've got two very competitive classes that'll be racing. We're getting a lot of exposure for the regatta for Newport Beach through our partnership with the LA Times and their community newspapers, so we're looking forward to a good weekend, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I have been duly chastised by the city clerk for neglecting the closed session report. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for correcting him, but there's no reportable action that was taken.
Very good report. Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides the yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, Councilman Deagle?
Yes, in talking about the Hoag Cup Regatta, one of the reasons for the construction of the docks at M Street is because the deep keels on those boats can't get in, on those yachts cannot get into the harbor. And so the city, in the short term, is helping to construct those docks, and in the long term, we're embarking on a pretty substantial dredging project of Lower Bay, and of course, that's going to take considerable funds, and we were very pleased to learn that the President's budget includes $1.78 million in seed money. And so, given that the bay is, that the quality of our bay is fundamental to our economic health and our recreation health, we're very pleased to get that start and look forward to working with the Corps of Engineers.
Thank you. Councilman Gardner?
Yes, the Corona Del Mar 5K is June 6th, and if you want to run or walk or just come out for Restaurant Row, you can go to action.com to sign up or contact the Recreation and Community Services Department at the city. Madam Clerk, when we make appointments, we, I was on the committee, and we have applicants come in and they're interviewed, do we contact them in any way afterwards and say, "Thank you very much, you weren't..."
You will send a letter signed by the mayor once the nomination is on, and we have the next.
Okay, so the people that aren't selected, they do get some kind of notice? Excellent. And then I just wanted to remind someone, I don't know who it should be, to talk about the property tax action.
Okay, Councilman Webb?
Well, one of my, I'm stealing Ed's thunder. One of my favorite parades is the shortest, longest parade I know about. It's two blocks long, but it's, but the parade members are probably closer to a quarter or a half mile long, and it's going to be on Sunday, June the 7th, starting at 11:00 a.m., and everybody should come in. This is truly a neighborhood parade, and it's lots of fun. And that's because I just didn't have one in my neighborhood to talk about.
Councilman Hen?
A few quick things. On Sunday, Saturday and Sunday, May 16th and 17th, the Relay for Life American Cancer Society Benefit was held, and I'm very pleased to report that we're currently estimating that approximately, well, more than $127,000 was raised by the participants this year and still counting. Your council critters team raised approximately $6,600 of that amount, but was eclipsed by other city teams that, including city slickers, had raised even more than that. City is a tremendous supporter of this very worthy cause, and on behalf of the American Cancer Society and everybody here, I want to thank Homer for being such a leader in actually initiating this whole event back in 2002, I think it was, and really generating the tremendous city support all the way along. Homer, congratulations. This is a tribute to you as well, personally. And then, with regard to the Memorial Day weekend, we hosted at the beach roughly a quarter of a million visitors over the last few days at not a great deal of incident. And along the way, though, I wanted to thank and commend our police department, fire, and lifeguards for another great job, especially the lifeguards who actually, I think, completed something on the order of 173 rescues over the course of the weekend. There was something else special that went on over the weekend, too. We had our first boardwalk safety program of the summer with the participation of the police department, led by Captain Johnson, and a number of sworn officers and police volunteers and police reserves, and wherein we wanted to educate the public about how to be safe on the oceanfront walk, and I think it was actually a very, very well-done event. Congratulations, Dale. That was very well organized and came across very well. And in fact, over the next two days, this was done on Saturday, and over the next two days, I definitely noticed fewer skateboards and surveys on the boardwalk. So I think we've had some impact, at least for now. And then, lastly, some of us may have noticed, we had a 4.7 magnitude earthquake that happened to have been on the northern end of the Newport Inglewood Fault, well-named because it crosses landfall just a little bit west of my house, and makes me think about it, and also raises our awareness about earthquake safety, and also was accompanied within a few days of the new OC Alert System, which is the reverse 911 system. I want to encourage all of our citizens to participate in that. Make sure your phone numbers are registered. I did it myself. It's very easy to do. You can register up to three phone numbers on it. So I encourage you to do that so that you can be informed as rapidly as possible in the event of a natural disaster of any sort. That's it.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Curry?
Well, first, I want to thank Councilmember Hen for the great job he did in organizing the council critters team for the Relay for Life. Mike, you really did a fabulous job in pulling us together. And speaking of critters, I think some of you saw in the paper today the coyote issue that we have in the, near the reservoirs of coming over now in this type of weather and snagging some pets. We also have apparently an issue of rattlesnakes in Buckgully, particularly behind Sandcastle. We've had reports this week and anecdotally of something on the order of four snake calls a day in the Buckgully area. Now, snakes are actually an important part of controlling rodents, and we have sort of policies that encourage us to sort of let the natural scheme of selection take its place, and that sort of sounds like a reasonable policy until a rattlesnake bites a child, and then it sounds like a pretty dumb policy. So what we, what I would like to do is have a report back to the council on steps that homeowners can take to reduce the potential for snake attack or snake visitation, I don't know if it's an attack, but also...
I think that's a movie.
But also to, and I'm being serious about this, to have some real thinking about the policies that we have when we have rattlesnake reports about how we deal with them, how we address them, and how we keep our neighborhoods safe from rattlesnakes.
Thank you. I would also like to invite everyone to come down to the Balboa Island Parade. Thank you for stealing my thunder there, Don. The folks in Balboa Island have worked really hard on it this year. It's all about family and kids, and it's going to be a lot of fun, and everyone should come out and see this parade at least once and really enjoy the community spirit that Balboa Island presents. So it'll be a fun day. It's next Sunday, June the 7th. I think it starts around 11 o'clock in the morning. You're right. Well, I said June 7th. Anyways, June 7th, a week from this coming Sunday. Madam Clerk.
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 10, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilman Hen?
I have nothing.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Curry?
No items?
Councilwoman Deagle?
None.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Webb?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove item number six from the agenda. I'm not asking for it to be continued or discussed tonight, just remove.
Okay. Anyone from the public want to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for the motion.
Move the approval of the consent calendar, items 1 through 10, with the exception of item six.
Second?
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilwoman Deagle?
None.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilwoman, or Webb?
Nothing.
Councilman Hen?
My usual reports. With regard to the ad hoc committee on group residential uses, just a quick update, 11:15, West Balboa from Ocean Recovery was approved by the hearing officer. The resolution of approval was signed on May 20th, and the appeal window for that is open through June 3rd. We also had previously denied a use permit for Newport Coast Recovery. That denial, the hearing officer had, that denial has been appealed, and then it was sent back to the hearing officer. It was, it is now planned for a rehearing the week of June 15th by the hearing officer. We'll set the final date here, I hope, in a few days. Regarding Balboa Recovery, we approved one unit for a total of six, that's down from 10, at 3206 West Balboa, and we denied a request for reasonable recovery for Balboa Recovery at 124 30th Street. And then lastly, Kramer Center, that meeting is scheduled, that hearing is scheduled for reasonable accommodation for 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, June 3rd. Then with regard to the Economic Development Committee, the committee did approve a redraft of its strategic plan that will be presented to council sometime soon, I presume, and also formed a, decided to form a new committee that is intended to do, to put together a recommendation for a clearinghouse for retail vacancies in the city. That committee, I think, will be staffed by Craig Batley, Richard Lures, and I have Jim, Jeff, and Lloyd. Yes, and Lloyd Eiker, and Jeff Cole. There you go. And so that ought to help us, we hope, with regard to the retail vacancies that have started to crop up here in the city. That's it.
Okay, Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Curry?
No report.
And I have no reports.
Mr. Mayor, may I just interject something? Forgive me. I should have mentioned when I was doing the non-closed session announcement that, just in the context of open session, that the matter C1 on the closed session agenda was dropped, no action was taken, and no discussion took place in closed session on that matter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go into public hearings. Our first public hearing is Ward of Non-Exclusive Solid Waste Collection Franchise JD Demolition and Grading Incorporated.
Here comes Mr. Harmon.
One of my long reports. This is number 29, I think, right? Was it 28, a couple of weeks ago? So 29. JD Demolition and Grading has met all of the requirements of the franchise program. They have secured insurance at the levels that the city requires. They will be paying 16% of their gross receipts to the city as part of the franchise agreement, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, any questions, staff?
I just have one question. I think I asked this even the last time. Is there, do we need to approve these things?
You do right now, the way it's written, but we're working...
Can't we change that?
We are, and we're working to do that, but we don't want to hold these people up...
No, I understand. I just want, I couldn't remember if I dreamed it or I said it.
You did. And I, no. You said it, and I agreed with you, but we're working to do that.
Okay, good, thank you.
This is a construction firm, and so they've got a big job coming up, and we don't want to hold them off.
Okay, no, we don't want to hold them. We need the building permit fees.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, open it for public comment.
Move the action.
Second?
Seeing no public comment, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 12, Proposed Amendment to the City's One-Year Plan for Fiscal Year 2008, 2009 to Permit Receipt of Supplementary, Supplemental Community Development Block Grant Recovery Funds Under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act.
Katie Bowden will provide this, a staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you're aware, the city is slated to receive approximately $96,603 in supplemental funds through the Community Development Block Grant Recovery Funds that were signed into law along with the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act. The intent of the funds is to stimulate the economy. Staff has worked very hard with both Public Works and the Recreation and Senior Services Department to identify a project that meets all of the program requirements that is also a shovel-ready project. We have noticed the project according to the requirements that are rather accelerated, a seven-day notice, and we have received no public comments. Staff does recommend approval of the substantially amended action plan, and I can answer any questions you may have. I also have our CDPG consultant, Clint Whitehead, here in the audience tonight to answer any technical questions you might have.
Okay, Councilman Rosansky?
I'll just move the axon.
Okay.
No questions.
Okay, Councilman Deagle?
Oh, I'm going to the...
Oh, okay.
Guys are moving too fast for me.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public want to comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, anybody want to address the council under public comments?
Come on, Brianna, it's your chance. You can make news.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments. Next item is Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report.
Stuck with me this evening because Mr. Lebo is ill. The Planning Commission had five business items on their agenda last Thursday. They took action on only two of them. The first was the Newport Healthcare Center on Superior Avenue. This was an appeal of the zoning administrator's denial of a sign permit, and the commission reversed that decision and approved the modification permit for the signs. The second item on which action was taken was to initiate an amendment to the Santa Ana Heights specific plan, and that's to provide provisions for licensing of horses, which is something that had been in the regulations prior to annexation, and somehow that was missed when we re-adopted the specific plan upon annexation. The item that was probably of greatest interest to people in the city council was the Erie Condominium Project in Corona Del Mar, which was back to the commission, I believe, for their third time, this time after preparation of an environmental impact report, and the commission opened the public hearing and took public testimony. They continued the matter to their next meeting on June 4th. The commission needed additional time to review the responses to comments on the EIR and asked the staff to prepare some additional information on the alternatives that were included in the EIR.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, anybody from the public want to comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to continued business. First item is City Hall and Park Master Plan Project, Approval of Amendment Number One to Professional Services Agreement with CW Driver for Program Management Services, Schematic Design and Development, and Amendment Numbers One and Two to Professional Services Agreement with Leighton Consultants Incorporated for Geotechnical Services.
Mayor, members of council, we're here tonight as a continuation. As you, several, a couple of meetings ago, we approved the next step for Boland Swinski-Jackson, the project architect, and so now we want to follow up with continued work by our program manager, CW Driver, and so we're asking for approval of an amendment to their contract to continue in this next phase of schematic design and design development. As well, we are also asking for approval of two amendments. One was for Leighton Consulting to do some additional work that was necessary for the EIR document, and also to essentially give them authorization to move forward with the design-level report for geotechnical... them authorization to move forward with the design-level report for geotechnical for the new city hall. And of course, with the accompanying amendment to pay for those, I also want to make note that during that, also that meeting where we did approve the contract amendment with Bolin Zwinski-Jackson, at that same meeting, we also approved some additional work for LSA, but we neglected to do a budget amendment. So that amount of about $250,000 for additional work for the environmental consultant, LSA, is also included in this budget amendment.
Okay. Any questions, staff? Councilman Rosansky?
Move the action.
Second.
Okay. Anybody from the audience want to speak? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is current, or next section is current business. Item number 15, Change to Newport Beach Municipal Code 11.08.010, Obstruction on Public Beaches Prohibited.
Captain Dale Johnson is going to provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This proposed change to the municipal code was brought to the attention of the police department on behalf of the residents primarily of the Corona del Mar area. They identified a problem in the Corona del Mar area, as well as some of the other local beaches concerning the proliferation of awnings, easy-ups, other shade devices on the beaches. The view and what you see on the beach very often when you go there now are these easy-op type of awnings with side coverings covering two or three sides of the easy-up. Sometimes they're placed closely together with two or three together so that you take up a large amount of the beach space there. It makes it difficult for public safety, obviously, to see what's going on inside of those enclosures. It also takes up a great deal of space on an already crowded beach. Also, the other people that are attending the beach very often have their view and their vision of the water and of the beaches as a whole obstructed based on the proliferation of these devices. The proposal in front of you today would regulate the use of those awnings and essentially allow for really only the use of a beach umbrella as a shade device in the beach area. The rest of the language is consistent with the ordinance as is stated now.
Okay. Councilman Gardner?
Can you tell me how many people complained?
No, ma'am, I can't. I received some of the discussions myself. Others I had forwarded to me from other officers and other staff that had spoken with people about the same issue. Also, I couldn't tell you the total number of people. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm just, I'm surprised because I've had one complaint, even after the Fourth of July, when it was awning to awning. You know, nobody called and said, oh, this is awful. Now, I'm somebody who goes to the beach with a towel and a pair of fins, so I, to me, it seems excessive. But I just want to be sure that this is really a problem that we are correcting, and not just something that we are adding to all our other things that you can't do on the beach. So I didn't know. What about over in your sections?
No, actually, I was kind of surprised when I saw it myself here, and it's not even just the beach. You're talking about parks here as well. You know, I know just with my own Boy Scout group, frequently we'll go to the park, or sometimes even to the beach with an easy-up or something. And a lot of families use them now as shade structures because they worry about skin cancer for their little kids, and sometimes it's hard to keep them under, you know, a little umbrella or something on the beach. I understand your concern with the side panels. I could see that where, okay, now it completely shuts off the view of the beach, or you can't see what people are doing. Maybe they're doing something they shouldn't be doing, drinking or something, smoking. You know, they're not supposed to do that on the beach either, in there. And so I could see, you know, limiting maybe shade structures to not having these sidewalls and things like that, where now you're creating a room on the beach or something. But, you know, I'd say, you know, I'm not totally against this, but I think as it's written, it's not really where I'd like to see us go. And I'd just say, I'd like to see this item continued for some further, maybe wordsmithing and discussion, because I just don't.
If I may, there are other options, as the staff report indicates, other areas, other beaches. They regulate the awnings based on the, on the side panels, the number that are allowed, the size of the awnings. I believe Huntington Beach limits it to a 10 by 10 awning and/or, you know, any combination to exceed 10. So there certainly are some other options that hopefully could address the concerns of the residents and.
Yeah, I have to say, it seemed to me the Huntington Beach approach was a little more reasonable, and I can understand not having full-on camping tents on the beach. I don't think that's appropriate, but it's pretty hard to get a decent amount of shade under an umbrella if you've got a family with two or three kids. And sun exposure is an issue, so I agree. I think it should, it needs more tailoring.
Also, the umbrellas are the only ones I've ever seen cartwheeling across the beach. Talk about your hazards.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to continue this item for further review.
I think this came out from mainly a lot of the people above Big Corona Beach there that they felt that the easy-up tents were, because of the limited amount of real estate there, that they were taking up too much room on the beach down there, helping to create crowded conditions there. So maybe we ought to notify those folks and let them come in and, you know, express their concerns firsthand on this.
And I think with a limitation on the size and not having side panels really does help. So we'll come back with options.
How large do these tents get?
You can purchase them in almost any configuration. Like 10 by 10 is a fairly standard size. You can get 20 by 20, and then again with the various side panels and.
The banquet hall addition.
Exactly. Yes, ma'am.
Well, yeah, what I've been hearing is some people gang them up and, you know, three 10 by 10s together, so you got a 10 by 10.
People are always trying. I mean, I went down to the beach one day, and somebody had taken tape and just marked off this thousand square foot area. I was like.
On the sand?
On the sand. I was like, no, 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 you can't, you can't do that.
Never used for duct tape, huh?
Yeah, something like that. Just like, so, I mean, we're always going to have that. People come down, they're expecting a lot of people, but I think we can at least look at some options before we go this far.
Okay. Anybody from the public want to comment? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is number 16, Council Review of Staff Status Progress Report on Seven of the Council's Priorities for 2009.
Mr. Mayor, if this is May, this means we're talking about the first seven council priorities and reviewing the status report and actions taken since two months ago when the first report was given. The first city council priority is to continue to seek and implement measures to minimize the adverse impacts of John Wayne Airport through the implementation of the city council's airport policy. So what we've done, and I know it's hard to see here, is that we are continuing with the 10 aviation committee meetings that take place monthly. The last Corridor City meeting took place earlier this month, May the 11th. The city attorney attended that meeting for the first time, and we had all city's managers and city attorneys represented. We thought it was an excellent meeting. Item number three has gathered a lot of discussion, and that is to conduct an air quality study seeking to determine the effects of John Wayne Airport aircraft on Newport Beach air quality. The city council has authorized that proposal, and we will, we are in the process of finalizing the agreement. I had an email from the person who is going to be conducting that survey. She was checking dates in July to come out and establish the locations for the six monitors that are going to take place. So it looks like that is going to happen in mid-July. So I may have been a little optimistic in that the measurement devices are going to be in place in July. It will probably be early August before they're in place. The fourth one I'd like to call your attention to is begin a regional dialogue with other airport operators seeking support to boost passenger traffic at Ontario Airport. On May the 2nd, I met with Mike Molina from Los Angeles World Airports, and we talked about Ontario, and we talked about our joint desires to see Ontario not only survive but thrive, and talked about some of our measures and the interest in the community that we have in order to make sure that John Wayne Airport does not grow and that Ontario Airport becomes a viable option for Orange County airport users. So that was a very good meeting. We have subsequently had some email communication, but I think it was a good start. That meeting was very positive and very well-received. I think about the only other thing is I am in the process of putting together a group meeting with some other city managers in other cities other than the corridor cities in order to meet this desire to create South County dialogue and also expand eventually the size of the corridor cities in terms of number of cities. So I expect to be able to report on that the next time that this priority comes before the city council. I think that's all that I have to say about it unless there are any questions. The second priority is to continue the organizational performance improvement effort through the data gathering of performance measurements resulting in comparing the city's organizational effectiveness with other agencies and also internally. This is a rather short report because there aren't all of that many steps. The city staff is still working at gathering benchmark data for ourselves. The report has been delayed as it shows in the second action step. We expect the report now by the end of August. There has been some problems in terms of the ICMA consultants being able to gather all of the data that they thought was available. They are seeking further data that will be included in the report, which is why that report is delayed. After that report comes out, there will be, next step will be some training, again with internal staff, in terms of how to gather that data, what data is available from other cities, and how to ask the right questions in order to make sure we have good comparable data. And as I said, the organization continues to, on a daily basis, through the software that has been developed, to gather measurement data that we can include in our own report. That basically covers the status report on this priority. Number three is focus on the development and adoption of a fiscal year 09-10 budget, which is balanced and which allocates the city's resources where they are most needed without adversely affecting services to the public. As you well know, today you had your second study session. We will have our third study session on June the 9th in order to review the budget. Today, we reviewed some particular items as far as facility financing plan, potential water rate increase, and also the effect of maybe the state taking some of local government's property taxes up to 8%. I know that was an issue that was surfaced prior to the recent election, where the measures that were devised by the governor and the legislature went down to defeat. So that was something that was floated. There is talk that maybe the legislature might vote on a proposed budget as early as this Friday. We're not sure what that is going to look like, whether it's going to be the governor's budget, or whether that vote will even take place. But we will just have to wait and see. Some of you participated earlier in providing a short video segment regarding this city's opposition to the state balancing its budget with local government revenues. But if the 8% holds true for our city, we anticipate it would be between $5.5 and $6 million, which would be a sizable hit. So as you well know, our revenues are down, just like the state's revenues are down, and you have already taken actions to make sure that the budget that you adopt, the second meeting in June, is going to be a balanced budget. And it is our expectation that the state would do the same without getting that money from other agencies.
Homer, the, they have to suspend, vote to suspend Prop 1A, is that correct? Is that how it's phrased?
That's right.
For the property tax, and that's a two-thirds vote?
That's a two-thirds vote in both, both the legislature and the Senate.
So that residents who are concerned have a strong feeling one way or the other could contact their representatives in Sacramento, expressing their opinion.
And the State League of California Cities, which represents all 480 cities, and the state is taking a very strong position. Counties are doing the same. So it would be good for our residents to be contacting their legislators and making sure that they know that they want the state to take care of their own deficit without creating a deficit in other governmental agencies. So we are still on track to have you adopt the budget on June the 23rd, and we will have another study session, as I said, on June the 9th. And that may be the last study session that we will have, depending upon any remaining questions or issues that you might want to have to discuss. The next priority is to update the facilities financing plan twice in 2009 in order to determine how best to finance Oasis and how best to move forward with planning for the city hall and other priority projects. As a part of the earlier study session today, you did review that in detail. It was about a 45-minute discussion, so that counts against one of the two times that you will be reviewing and updating the facilities financing plan. I thought that was a fine discussion, and I think all of you went away knowing, you know, based upon a snapshot of today where those projects are looking at being funded and how we intend to get the money in order to fund those projects. The council will have another review, we think, in November the 24th, so about at the end of the calendar year, in another six months, we should be ready to do this again. But we still won't have any bids on any other projects, so I would not think it would change except if the economy deteriorates or gets substantially better. I think that would be really the only information that would be subject to any kind of dramatic change. The next one I would like to review is to continue to enforce the city's group homes regulations in order to minimize the impacts on residential neighborhoods. And I'd like to review that if I could, but Dave Kiff is the one who normally does this review. I think Councilman Henn has been giving regular status reports to the city council in terms of what the administrative hearing officers' actions have been taken. The city council did hear one of those appeals. I will point to this one and say that abatement letters have gone out to about 12 facilities that didn't file for use permits or reasonable accommodation. And as of the date of this report, five of the 12 are confirmed closed. Others are subject to inspection or filing of actions for civil abatement. There are two relevant bills that have been interdeuced with the city help, SB 268-Harmon, and the city's also supportive of AB 1284-Huffman relating to recovery homes. SB 6, excuse me, 268 passed out of its first committee hearing in April, as did AB 1284, which is further than we've ever gotten before in trying to get some meaningful legislation.
What accounts for that development? Does anyone know?
Well, certainly not the lobbying of Councilmember Rosansky and me. We went down in flames when we went up there for those. But, you know, I'm, first off, we've taken a little more, what I think some people would call reasonable attitude, about the makeup of the bills. We're not trying to solve the whole issue in one stroke. And so the kinds of things that are included in these bills are by and large very reasonable. It's public safety on the one hand, and the Harmon bill, to make sure that we get fire clearance and updated fire clearances. It's hard to argue with that, the safety of residents. And so it was a combination of sort of dialing back a little bit, but still trying to maintain some stuff substantive report, the import. The Huffman bill drove out of a very controversial situation up in Marin, and it's sponsored by a Democrat, so that might have something to do with it.
Yeah, I think partly it's just a wider recognition that this is an area that probably does need a little bit more regulation. It's not just one or two cities that are whining about it, that it really affects many communities across California. So I think it's just, we worn them down, hopefully.
And I think it has become less political. The issue has been less politicized than it was before.
It really does cut across party boundaries and geographic boundaries. And so hopefully, I think actually both those bills have been reported out of appropriations as well. So they're on their way for legislative consideration.
The city staff continues to take enforcement actions and defending the city against litigation is the last item on here that will be. is the last item on here that will be continuing and on a daily basis is still underway. I don't have anything further to report on that. The next one will be given by Sharon, and that's to continue the alignment of the city's codes, regulations, and policies with the general plan.
And here, I think the two most timely ones are the top two, the review of the zoning code. As I said last time, the general plan, LCP Implementation Committee, has wanted to review the next draft to look at the revisions that they requested. So, we are now anticipating that we'll be before Planning Commission to start those hearings on September 16th. And then, the next one is the amendment to the coastal land use plan for consistency with the general plan. And the Coastal Commission approved our amendment on February 5th with modifications. And then, policy language needed to be worked out, so that was finally approved by the commission on April 8th. Now, it's in the city's hands, and we have until July 28th to decide whether the council will accept the modifications that the Coastal Commission approved. The remainder of the items are ready or almost ready to go to the Implementation Committee when they conclude their work on the zoning code, and I have a feeling they'll be happy to do something different.
If there are no questions about that, we will go to the last of the seven, and that is to reduce the fire hazard and lower Buck Gully in order to provide heightened fire protection to the community. We don't have any reportable actions since the last time. That is the bad news. But the good news is that we have not adjusted our dates either, because it seems like the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection is very close to making the designation that we are waiting for so that it would declare Lower Buck Gully as a very high-fire-hazard severity zone. Once that happens, then the city council can adopt that locally, and we have some protections as far as SEQA and as far as some other regulations are concerned. And we would put property owners on notice and give them a certain amount of time in order to clean the debris that creates the fire hazard, because that is their private property. So, by the end of the year, we're looking at reporting to the city council with a status report on how much, hopefully, all of that property that has been cleared.
Homer, on that particular subject, it might be interesting for us to get a report back from several of the battalion chiefs that were up in the Santa Barbara fire, because I've heard at least one of them mention that the similarities with the canyon fires that they had up there were very close to what we have here, except up here, up there, there was more separation between the houses than what we have here. And I don't think that we have enough knowledge of how serious this can be if we don't act. And so, that it would be, I think it would be nice for us to get some firsthand experience of those that have actually been on the fire line and some of their thoughts on this.
We'll do that in a study session, maybe the second study session in June. Should be able to do that.
It would be a good idea, plus, and have them at the same time, perhaps, draw in some of the pictures that they took on the fire right below the reservoir in Newport Beach. Those just, those have so many similarities that we need to continue to educate the people that. We need our natural material, our natural areas, but we also need to have some clear spaces so that we have defensible zones to fight the fires.
That concludes my status report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any further questions, the city manager? Anybody from the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, this is just receive and file, so no actions necessary. Next item is city council consideration of a revised city manager job description.
Thank you. The job description for the city manager has not been revised for at least 10 years, and the city manager recruitment council subcommittee asked to take a look at that job description and gave considerable comment and input regarding coming up with a new proposed city manager job description. Both the current and the draft job description are in the agenda for your consideration. Councilman Henn had really the laboring oar on coming up with a lot of ideas. He consulted Terry Cassidy and myself, and we think that it is a fine document, and we would recommend it being approved for use on an ongoing basis.
Any comments, Councilman Webb?
On lighter note, I think that it really probably should have something in there that we need to have him be able to leap tall buildings and be closer to Superman than, maybe even Batman.
You don't want to say you want him to.
Him or her. That's right. Isn't that already in here?
I looked at it, and I think it covers the ground.
You know, I would point out that it ties right back to our city charter with many of the things that are in the position description, as well as the general description of the overall responsibilities, and also importantly, the essential attributes going beyond technical job responsibilities and qualifications. And so, hopefully, it'll be a good document.
Okay. I'd like to thank Councilman Henn for all the work he put into it. He took a lot of our comments, and I thought he did a good job of organizing them into the description. Anybody from the public want to comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for action.
That move we accept.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. Last item is item S18, Formation of an Ad hoc Committee for Negotiating the International Bay Club's Newport Beach Country Club Development Agreement. I didn't realize that there was such a thing till our Assistant City Manager Sharon Wood pointed it out to me that it was required, and the Bay Clubs has submitted an application for rebuilding the Newport Beach Country Club clubhouse at a substantially, I guess you could say, larger square footage. Am I being correct?
Yes.
Has this been resolved, and weren't there two?
There are, and it isn't resolved, but.
Oh, okay.
People are trying to resolve it. Hopefully, it will be resolved. So, it would be my intent to appoint myself and Councilman Rosansky to that committee, and entertain a motion to do so.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Anybody want to comment from the audience? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. Adam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay. Any motion for reconsideration? Okay. Seeing none, I'll adjourn our meeting to Tuesday, June 9th at 3:00 PM. Homer, is that right? 3:00? 3:00 PM in order to continue discussions relative to the 2009-2010 budget, or fiscal year budget.